Good evening. Welcome to the January 10, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather in this planning board to discuss the items of our community and our county. And we pray that Thy blessing will be with us, that we might understand the needs of both the community and the individuals who are asking for changes. And pray that we might be attentive and know what the right decisions that we should make. Influence us to do good in all we do in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
At this time, Chair, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt. The agenda is written.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign. With no opposition, the agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Approved the minutes as have written.
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign. Again, with no opposition, the minutes are approved. The following are the guidelines for speakers for tonight's meeting. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the board chair prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chair. Please remember that it is expected that many may wish to speak about the same case. Once speakers begin, if you agree with an argument already presented in favor or against, please practice the courtesy of indicating with a show of hands and a short statement of support rather than presenting the same argument again. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chair reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Would now call upon staff to introduce our first case, 2021-25.
It's good to see you. We didn't get to have a chance to have our January meeting, so Happy New Year to everyone.
Make it quick while we still have the lights on.
And no chit-chat. Okay, I'll move along. Our cases this evening are two rezoning cases this evening are of the same type of request. The first is 2021-25. It's a request for rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural. The tax pin, the address is 2454 NC 65, which is just after you turn off 74, about a quarter mile down on the left. Wentworth Township, this is a straight rezoning. Here's our vicinity map. Coincidentally, all our cases are right in this general area this evening. Excuse me. The zoning map shows the highlighted parcel RP. There's this small cluster of RP here at the nexus of 704, NC 65, and Crowder Road. But it's surrounded by RA, as you can see. These lots, though they are zoned RP, several of them have manufactured housing in place, which could be that it was pre-ordinance, pre-88. It also could be during a time period where single and double wides were allowed in RP with a special use permit, and they've gotten put in place over the years. It's the adjoining lots are characterized by a mix of single-family and manufactured homes. Excuse me.
Is it the applicant's wish to put up manufactured home on that site? Do you know?
That is included in a list of wishes for rezoning from RP to RA. She wants to keep her housing options open, Mrs. Tuck and Mr. Tuck, sorry, Angela and Next is just an area water features map, which is essentially unremarkable here. The land use plan, it's in a G1 growth area, which is targeted for low-density residential uses essentially. In that land use area, RA zoning is encouraged as the primary district. This is the, I'll go back to this map. This is, you'll see at the top of the map, a little purple dot. This is very close to a strategic, pardon me, rural commercial node. But RA is perfectly fine in this area, as it is throughout the G1 class. There's nothing really standing against it. Low-density residential development policy G1-1 encourages residential development to be located in areas surrounding the rural crossroads areas, as identified on the future land use map. And the land use map, the land use plan suggests that these areas should generally be zoned residential, agricultural, and housing variety is targeted. Targeted is a major goal of the land use plan on page 88. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I don't believe Angela and Grady are here this evening. And again, this is a nonconditional rezoning, so all classes, all uses in each class must be considered when making the decision.
Questions for Mr. Cochran?
I have questions. Any calls or inquiries?
We had about three inquiry calls, no one particularly for or against it. We had very few for any of these this evening.
Sure. Any other questions from the board?
All right. Thanks.
If not, we'll proceed to motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the request. The planning board has reviewed case 2021-25 rezoning to residential agricultural and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case number 2021-25. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of the G1 land class is the permitted uses in the residential agricultural district are compatible with the character of its existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood. And the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, G1 land class, and future land use map. The board considers this action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential agricultural district. The proposed use allows allowed in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon landowners, neighbors, and the community. The property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential, agricultural, commercial, institutional, and industrial uses. The residential agricultural zoning is not discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors, the size of tract in question, the compatibility of zoning action with the comprehensive plan, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and the relationships between the envisioned permitted uses and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Could you second?
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for rezoning case 2021-25. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, there being no opposition. The planning board will send a recommendation to the county commissioners for their final The next case on the agenda. 20-21-26.
That case is sort of being fast-tracked. The board of commissioners will hear it next week because the December meeting got canceled, and there was such a delay. We advertised it appropriately, though. It's not a typical practice, but in this case, because it's fairly simple, we went ahead and sort of stacked it that way, and they're aware of it. Okay. Our next case is, I went back too far, sorry about that, guys. 2021-26, Mabe. Mrs. Mabe owns two parcels that are currently zoned residential protected. She is requesting the same as the previous applicant rezoning to residential agricultural. They're located very near the intersection of Poppy and Smothers Roads. One fronts Poppy and the other fronts Smothers, that you'll see on the maps. In the Wentworth Township, this is another straight, nonconditional rezoning. The tracts are five and two acres respectively. Again, no conditions can be considered when making the decision to recommend approval or denial of this case. You'll see here is the vicinity map, also quite close to the last location, just a bit off of 704, down Smothers Road. Poppy is a small, I believe it's state-maintained road. Again, you see a very small cluster here of residential protected zoning, surrounded by residential agricultural. The case here is very similar to the last geographical characteristics in that there is a mix of single-family residential and manufactured housing, despite the residential protected status of this small strip of parcels here. The aerial and water features map, creeks nearby, nothing applying directly to this parcel, which looks also very similar to the land use plan map. This is located in the O2 land use class, which is rural, essentially rural reserved lands, simply one step above from conserved lands, which are those that are located either in conservation or voluntary ag districts. This area is targeted for agricultural uses and very low residential uses, low intensity Primarily, O2 is designated for low-density, single-family residential uses. The land use plan, again, recommends in the same, the same recommendation that these areas be zoned residential agricultural. And I always like to point out that housing variety is a targeted goal in the land use plan. Mrs. Mabe is not here. She let me know she would not be attending this evening also. But as discussed, this is a nonconditional rezoning. We had, I think, like two calls on this one. We didn't even get three. And they were just neighbors who got postcards and wanted to know what it was about. No feelings either way, essentially just inquiries. I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone might have. And I believe the goal here is the same, to have access to a broader variety of housing that is otherwise not allowed in the residential protected district.
Meaning manufactured housing?
Including manufactured housing.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cochran regarding this application?
Just have one question.
Mr. Pink?
With the resident protected, just south of the property, that owner did call, actually, the two calls that we got were directly adjacent owners, and just basically wanted more information, didn't have any strong feelings either way. It does abut residential protected directly south and north, but also residential agricultural directly behind to the east, west, pardon me, to the west, and then directly across the street to the east, there's the residential agricultural. I don't remember names off the top of my head, but that neighbor did call. No concerns? Yeah, yeah. Anything else?
Doesn't appear to be.
Thanks.
To motion, please.
The planning board has reviewed case 2021-26 rezoning. Are we on 25 or 26?
26.
I was looking at the screen right here. Rezoning to residential agricultural and adopts the following statement as required by NCGS 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case 2021-26. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of the O-2 rural land class. The permitted use in the residential agriculture district are compatible with the character of existing developments on adjacent parcels in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, O-2 rural land class, and future land use map. The board considers this action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential agricultural district. The proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community. The property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential, agricultural, commercial, institutional, and industrial uses. The residential agricultural rezoning is not discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors, the size of the tract, two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan, three, the benefit and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner and for the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community, and four, the relationship between the envisioned permitted uses and uses currently present in the adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2021-26. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed like sign, there being no opposition. A recommendation will be sent to the county board of commissioners to approve this application. And with that, we'll ask staff to present case number 2021-27, which is a modification to a special use permit already issued. Am I correct, Lynn? Already issued. Mr. Marziano, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Originally, the county shooting range complex was approved through the conditional district rezoning for highway heavy industrial several years ago. But since we have this as a special use in our existing ordinance, we decided to modify through this process, basically for transparency. So with that said, the county is applying to modify this current range. The original site plan had for rifle and pistol range, but they're moving that pistol range further south. In your packet, one of the maps will show the site sketch of it being a little bit south of the range that's there currently. But there'll also be included an indoor facility just north of the range, probably around the northern edge of the parking lot. Both of those facilities will comply with the heavy, the high-impact use table for their setbacks. And we've basically found that since this is an allowed use in the district, and it is an existing use in the district, it more than meets the standards for what we need to do and approve this, or for the staff to recommend approval for y'all. Go through the maps here. There's the vicinity map. It's just north of the landfill. There's the zoning map. And the aerial, I don't know if we include, we did not include the, I was going to say the site sketches. For clarification, the conditions were in the packet. Upon approval, a full site plan would be a requirement before we'd actually issue any actual permits, along with verification that it meets the NRA guidelines. I think those are usually the two big cruxes right there for the range that's already, outside of what's already existing there. We already have staff present there to review or oversee the operations and the other requirements that are currently in the ordinances.
Is the gun range owned by the county, or is it privately held?
It's owned by the county.
Okay. I kind of thought it was, since our, the application was signed by Mr. Metzler. Any questions for Mr. Marziano?
Did you get any calls?
Zero phone calls about this, and I double-checked that the sign was still up after the snowstorm. So, postcards went out. I think because of the nature of the area right there, it only went out to about 16 properties. So, I mean, even though it's such a large size, a lot of that's eaten up with the landfill south of it. So most of our boundary went into the north part of it and the neighbors, and no one contacted us.
An unrelated, well, maybe related question. The name of this road, when I was doing the research on this, it doesn't exist.
It's, the road James Callen goes through straight to this parking lot. We were requested by the 911 call center to address it off of that road about four months ago, three months ago. Its previous address was off of 704, which is why we still put the sign all the way at 704, just for clarity's sake. But that was a request from the 9/11 call center.
So will it, do you think it will change on maps at any point in time?
Well, I know it's not on Google, but it is on the county's GIS.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions?
That will get updated to Google eventually.
I was just curious why I couldn't, I mean, I knew where it was, but I couldn't find it.
Any additional questions for Mr. Marziano? Sign up sheet, but I believe, Ronnie, did you want to speak?
I hear available to answer any questions.
Okay.
If I have any questions, but otherwise, I won't make up your time.
Yeah, it seems pretty cut and dry. Sheriff Page, did you want to have anything to say, or do you want to just be available for questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Any questions for a county engineer or county sheriff? Any discussion? Then, then moving right along, why don't we have a motion?
Are you ready for a motion? Although the paperwork's not there with it.
Paperwork doesn't include the motion.
We have reduced the motion. I'm sorry. It should be, oh, maybe it's.
You reduced it, all right. It's non-existent.
Oh, well, let me just, what's the case number?
2021-27. Your criteria is down at the bottom of the first page.
Yeah, the criteria for approval.
Yeah. It's under number six on the staff report.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the special use permit, case number 2021-27, with the following conditions in addition to those included in the UDO reference. The use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. The use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of its ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. The use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and enhance the value of the contiguous property, or that the use or development is a public necessity. And the use or development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter and the Rockingham County Development Guide.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the modification to the existing special use permit. All those in favor please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign, there being no opposition. The modification is granted.
Thank you, y'all.
You're welcome.
Julie?
I apologize. I will put that motion sheet back in there. I didn't realize how popular it was, so.
No worries.
Put it back in there.
We rolled with it, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is actually much easier.
The agenda is updates from our community development director.
No, I got it. Real quick, I wanted to cover with y'all a few issues that we're having regarding manufactured housing. In the recent update to the UDO, manufactured housing was removed from the RM residential mixed district. And what that's left with us is subdivisions that were zoned RM that were intended primarily for mobile homes and manufactured homes, that now have vacant lots that, you know, they can't sell for a single-family or stick-built, that kind of situation. It's also run into the problem that with it being removed, if someone wanted to update their model or pull off one for damages and bring a new one on, I can't permit that. So we're at a sticking point of a few ideas of how we could rectify the situation. One idea would be to, even though it goes against what the land use plan had called for, put manufactured housing back in to the RM district, maybe with some beefed-up development standards. That's one way we could go about doing it, and then figure out a solution in the long term to remove that district altogether again and rezone everything. But at this point, we don't have the time. The reason we're seeing some of these rezonings pop up is because that's the more affordable housing option, and those were the districts that they used to be allowed in. And that's why a lot of RMs going back to RA, tonight's RP's being similar situation that used to be allowed as a special use permit in the RP and no longer are. But as y'all know, the housing market being what it is, a lot of people can't afford the stick-built option. Modulators have gone up, even the manufactured housing has gone up to what a small stick-built used to be. So in order for us to pretty much allow for that affordable housing, we need to figure out a solution. Another one of those solutions is possibility of rezoning all the old RM into the MHD district, which is also similar to what our land use plan calls for. But that's a monumental task. It's expensive. We don't have the manpower on staff to make that happen in the next few months in order to help these people, A, find property to put their mobile homes on. The sheer amount of the land in the county that covers, we'd be doing full-page ads in the newspapers for our zoning map and still notifying out of the county property owners. It's something, you know, we've been racking our brains. We've been brought in a team of people from the real estate industry to help us come up with possible solutions and look at ways that we can mitigate this. It's just, it's, we're at a loss of how to proceed, and we kind of like y'all's input, but I don't want it like tonight. I just want to bring it to your attention, let you mull it over a little bit. Next meeting, maybe hash out a few of these ideas. I can send out an email with basically a detail of what I'm talking about here. But it's just to get it on your mind that this is right now a problem we're experiencing. It's either going to be two to three rezonings every meeting. It's either going to be two to three rezonings every meeting so that people can put a house on their property, or it's to find a solution to where we can just handle it as it was intended to administratively. So, I just want that for food for thought in your books. And if you have any suggestions or anything, I'm happy to have y'all give me a call and help us out on this one because it's, there's a lot of property in this county that when RM shifted to becoming more of a mixed-use thing as opposed to residential mixed, we messed up some legacy zoning, basically.
One suggestion I have is to reconvene the subcommittee that reviewed and approved the Unified Development Ordinance and the land use plan, and have a discussion begin there.
All right.
That'd be Gene Robertson, Charlie Rakestraw, Kevin Berger, Charlie Hall, and myself. I'm not sure relying totally on real estate people is the way to go.
Well, it wasn't so much as relying on them for the ideas. It was bringing them in to make sure that we understood what the true issues were and had their input, so we didn't just create a bigger hole at the end of the day.
Well, it occurs to me that, you know, affordable housing is a big issue, and I just don't see where we can legislate out the opportunity for people to take advantage of that as a home-buying option.
No, we agree. That's why, that's why we need to figure something out, so.
Yeah.
Getting the committee back together with, with some ideas would be great.
At least begin the discussion at that level. Available whenever it suits the commissioners and Mr. Rakestraw and Mr. Robertson.
We'll look into that. If anybody else has anything, feel free to drop us a line as we think about this. Anything that we can even.
In the meantime, though, Marzio, if you, if you have alternative suggestions for the board to, you know, be looking over and to consider, please, by all means, send them out.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll send out the few that we came up with, just as food for thought. If y'all have any suggestions, we can take it all over to the subcommittee as well and let them mull it over, too. And this isn't a, this isn't a solution one or two people can come up with. So, it's, I'm not joking when I say it's a massive undertaking to look at this entire county of all the old RM zones.
Oh, geez.
Intended specifically for manufactured housing, and then watch it just.
It'd take a year to do.
Yeah.
Or a staff of people.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Do you have any updates on anything else, Marzio?
Actually, at this point, not really. We, we've been scrounging around with this, and basically just Lynn and I have been kind of pressed, and we're looking for our third position soon to help take some of that workload off. But we're just trudging along, trying to get our software going, trying to get everything back in line. Mostly just, like I said, the majority of our work lately has been dealing with people trying to put up manufactured housing. And then, you know, of course, subdivisions every other day, minor subdivisions, and then people wanting to talk about large-scale stuff coming through, so we're growing.
Yeah.
I don't know that I like it as, I mean, going back and making this a solution for the long-term plan. I don't, I don't like the idea of, that's just a lot of manufactured housing going forward, and this is just a quick fix to make sure that process is streamlined. I'd rather us have a, a quick fix for it right now, rather than doing something that could affect us in the long term. Does, does that make sense? So, maybe the way that we're doing it now is good, where we're looking at it by case-by-case basis. Don't you think, maybe, maybe I'm asking, will it go back to normal at some point?
Only if the UDO gets modified.
Okay.
The Unified Development Ordinance is the final control over these kinds of things. And the reason I'm suggesting the subcommittee get back together is that it's going to take a modification to the Unified Development Ordinance to resolve this problem.
Right.
And we can continue to do it on a case-by-case basis, but we can't do that forever.
Right.
We will continue on, you know, because we've already got three hearings next month for similar situations. We will be continuing the process we're doing. It's just, it's really taxing on our abilities to have to prepare those hearings when really we could just go ahead and approve it with developmental standards that we already have in our ordinances and move on.
Yeah.
The same we would a house.
All the more reason to get the subcommittee back together again.
Again, we won't stop anything until that point.
Right now, it's kind of a market-driven problem, and if we know how long that market-driven problem's going to last.
That's what I'm.
That's, that's, that's the problem right now, is the market.
One of the underlying factors.
Factors, yes.
Yeah, and I would say it's a driving factor. But what we also have is, even in, even in a bad market time, then we have sitting vacant property in these subdivisions where nobody wants to build next to a bunch of manufactured homes on the last two lots of a subdivision. So, we need to take into account that stuff, too, which, those are the ones I would look to go towards rezoning to that manufactured home district that we have in our UDO. But again, that's still staff time, hours, advertising costs, and getting it all straight and solid and getting it right the first time so we don't have to rezonate again. So, we want to get a, we want to get a fix, and then we want to get a solution, is how we want, is how we're approaching this subject.
And keep in mind, if we were able to do something, this is just for discussion, something simple like allowing manufactured homes back in residential mixed zoning as a blanket for the county. When it comes to the newer understandings about residential mixed for single-family, townhomes, et cetera, those will be governed also by de-covenants and restrictions, which will say, you know, no manufactured housing. So, keep in mind that that sort of thing will come into play when it comes to housing subdivisions versus sort of legacy zoning, where you have these large swaths of residential mix that are primarily dominated by manufactured housing, but then all of a sudden, folks who've been doing this for 30 years, like, oh, I can't do that. So, yeah, just keep that in mind, too.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the 2022 Planning Board Board of Adjustment regular meeting calendar with an amendment to adjust our starting time to 6:30 PM. And before we begin the discussions, I have to remind you that we can't really have a discussion about changing the start time without also considering our end time. Our bylaws currently call for our meeting to commence at 7:00 PM with a time limit till 10:00 PM. That's three hours. I'm not sure if you all are in favor of holding the 10:00 PM cutoff time, or do you want to adjust it backwards to 9:30, since it would still be a three-hour meeting time from 6:30 to 9:30? And if we do this, we will also need a second motion to change the bylaws accordingly. But those, that motion will be subject to approval of the county commissioners, because we serve at their pleasure. And any changes we make to the bylaws pursuant to the latest edition of the bylaws, we have to submit such a request to them for their approval.
That being said, who are open for discussion?
I, it seems like to me that I am all in favor of moving this meeting earlier, because there have been a couple of nights when we've, we've been here late, and particularly in, you know, for those of us that still work, you know, that's, and are old, that, that gets a little taxing. I mean, not that I can't do it, but I think that, you know, just a half hour, I have no problem being here at 6:00 PM, unless there's some, you know, community difference there that we need.
I think the reason 6:30 is a good time, and I believe 6:30 was adopted by the commissioners, because it gives everybody a chance to get off of work at 5:00, get home, get something to eat, and then make the trip here. Whereas if we go with a 6:00 start time.
Yeah.
We might be excluding the opportunity for some people to attend the meeting.
Do what? You can't, well, and that was just a suggestion, so 6:30 seems like a really good, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. So, does that mean that we need to, that we need to make the motion for this and then do a separate motion to amend the bylaws? Or can we do this all at it?
Yep.
Okay.
We need, we need two motions. We need a motion to adjust the start and end time, and then we need a separate motion to include that as a change to the bylaws, which in turn will be submitted to the county commissioners for approval.
I'm really loving the 6:30. I mean, it's just, it's.
Any other discussion?
I like keeping it to three hours.
Yes.
Because we, because otherwise, you know, things, we've had a couple of them where we've pushed that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think having that three-hour cutoff is, is a good way to kind of end the dialogue.
Mm-hmm.
And move forward.
Then I'll make a motion that we.
Can I interrupt for one second, right quick? Before you make a full motion, I did want to bring to your attention, there are two or three other things that need to be either updated or corrected in the bylaws, so.
I thought we had gone over those already.
Oh, there are, we have done some, but there are some things that have been, that I have caught that are lingering, that there's some old language about two-thirds majorities here and there, not about board motions and votes, but about cases where it should be a simple majority. And a couple other things, not a lot of stuff, but a couple things.
Can, can we do this motion now, see what other bylaws revisions need to be made?
Yeah.
And then do that at the next meeting? Is that, would that be okay?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Julie's got a bad case of Roll Tide.
Roll.
I've got money riding on this game. I've got money riding on this game.
You gambler, you.
Like $2.
All right, I'll move that we change our starting time to 6:30 and our end time to 9:30.
I second.
All those, or, or no, we need a second to that motion.
I second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to alter our start and end time. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. No opposition. So, we're in agreement that we want to change our start and end time. I further move that we make a recommendation to the county commissioners that they allow us to change our bylaws to reflect these changes.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Again, no opposition, so a recommendation will be made to the county commissioners to permit us to change our bylaws accordingly. And at this time, it's time for the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Has been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.